Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Cholo City Council this evening of a regular meeting. We'd like to welcome those that are with us here in the audience, as well as those who may be watching tonight on City 56. We're grateful for the great weather we're having for September and for the change of seasons a little bit here. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet in a meeting tonight as this, and able to voice our opinions and hear from the public as well. We'd like to begin this evening by invocation of Ask Councilmember Clark, if he had lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and Councilwoman Kukavas. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
For Father in Heaven, we come before you at this time and thank you for the opportunity we have to gather as a council. We were able to discuss the needs of this community, to discuss the items before us. We pray that thou will please guide and direct us at this time as we deliberate, that we'll be able to be enlightened by that understanding, that we'll be able to have a spirit of peace and community and friendliness about us, that as we might disagree on things, we won't be disagreeable. We'll be able to come to conclusions and consensus that are best for the community, and that are best for the people and the citizens of Cholo, as we do in asking the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item we have tonight is a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on the agenda may do so at this time. Please know that your comments or need to be addressed to the council as a whole, and you have three minutes. At this time, we'd like to open that up for the public. See, nobody moved. A call to the public. I'll close the call to the public and come back to special events. Tonight, we have a presentation by the Cholo Chamber of Commerce. Rob Heffner, I guess delegated as the person to speak at this time on behalf of the chamber. Thank you as a president.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor Lact, and the rest of the council members. Thank you. I'm in the role now as acting president until the end of the year, and the acting, or actually interim president, and acting executive director of the chamber until we move forward with some decisions by the board. I want to state publicly, and I did in a letter this morning, that I have no desire to be the continuing executive director, so that's not an aspiration of mine. So doing this is a completely voluntary status. We've got a presentation. I don't know if it gets to show. Can you see that yet? Okay. So this TIC report, want to jump into the information you guys have been asking for, and you know, what's going on at the chamber. We do have a complete focus on the TIC. Obviously, it's a big part of the city's involvement with the chamber. And you can see in August, voter visitor count was 423 through the doors. That's a pretty significant uptick. If you've seen things in the past. We'll go over some website statistics, and also the social media stats as well. You'll see all good numbers there. We've continued a social media presence on Facebook, and there's a video there that had 6,000 reach, 1,800 engagements. You'll see 77 shares. That's that and recently, the stuff in the last week or so, continuing what we've gone. We've got about 68,000 overall reach. Facebook is one realm. Another realm we want to look at is Instagram. We've added also Pinterest, and we've added Twitter as well. Now, on Instagram, this is the last seven days, just what's happened in the last seven days, and both the impressions and then the actual reach, which for a chamber is significantly good. That's, you know, we're showing off the community, showing what we have to offer, and we're focusing in on businesses as well. So one of the things that's happened here in the last two weeks specifically, is we started focusing in on the City of Cholo businesses, and businesses that service the City of Cholo, and that's going to be our focus moving forward. And just to show you that everybody's on board, if you look behind me and into the audience, you'll see the entire Cholo Chamber Board of Directors. Every single member is here right now in the building. So that's the support. All of these individuals in the last, I would say, three weeks have put in about $6,000 worth of hours, if you look at what they get paid hourly at a volunteer status. They've been in the building. They've been working at committees. We've set up a special refresh committee for the chamber. We have an actual dedicated TIC committee now, and I'm going to bring two of them up here in a minute to talk about, you know, some of the things that we're focused on with TIC, what the focus is going to be. And we're looking at a good, better, best scenario. Where good is everybody in Cholo is represented in the TIC, because that's the purpose of that building. And then better is to become a chamber member, and best is a higher level of chamber membership. So this website stuff, I want you to look at and just have as a reference, because we're going to hopefully talk about this at your retreat in October, and you'll see on differentiation, because we're going to make a focus there. Websites are important. Back on that one slide where I showed you with Facebook, if you get to reference it later, you're going to find 1,200 clicks, 1,200 plus clicks that were off of that video about the elk on the side of the road. Those are all clicks to our website. Okay? Another thing we've had is in the last, we have about 18 packets asked, where about 12 of them were online. They asked for relocation packet. That's people that want to move here, and are specifically looking for the resources to do so. So Councilmember Kukavas asks for membership of the chamber. So this is where we're at, membership wise, and that's been our number here for the last few years. We're looking to significantly increase that, and I can tell you already, there's no number in there for September yet, because we're going to follow our proper board protocol and our proper bylaws deal, or we approve it at the board meeting. You're going to see a jump in numbers already, because the membership committee is actually going out and meeting and talking to people and interacting, as we believe a chamber should. So with that, I'd like to, you know, that's our building, sitting there in a deuce. We've added some lighting there in a little bit, because there was no lights on it. I want to add some more lighting, and we're going to start making that the focal point, so people can't miss it when they drive by, both at night and during the day, because we want it to be the information center for Cholo. So I'm going to bring up Angie Fabian and Tricia Spear. Both going to groan, so just to talk briefly about the focus on the TIC, and they are the TIC committee. With, right?
Those two talking briefly.
Hey now. I will try to keep it short. Thank you, everyone, for having us here. So we're both excited to be on this committee, as most of my business comes from visitors that come to Cholo. So this is a passion of mine, and I'm excited to work as a partnership with the city to enhance that. And we see such a great opportunity to do that. So some of the stuff that we're doing, like he was saying, in the building, is kind of making that the focal point for people that come in. I mean, we're the gateway to the White Mountains, and so we want to make that where they can come somewhere that they feel welcome, where they have not only the information, but things that they can get from Cholo that, you know, either say Cholo, or just, you know, just making it more of our hometown community that we know we have. We just have to portray that. And so one of the things that we're going to be working on, I'll just speak briefly on it. We're going to be doing an outside kiosk. I've already talked to a couple businesses, one of them being mine, that we're going to donate the materials and the labor. Don't tell my husband that, because I'm involved telling him that. So he's, so we have extensive experience in building kiosks with the Forest Service. So we're going to be building a kiosk outside of, all donated to the chamber for outside information when we're closed, for maps, and information of events when we can get there, you know, that sort of thing. So something that's always there for our community. And then also having a place where people can come in and just be welcome. I'll let Angie talk about this part, because the decorative part.
The decorative part. She's the decorative part.
So we're going to have the inside of the building kind of not restructured or repainted, but more homey, more cabin-y, comfortable for people to come in, take a seat, look at maps, ask questions. We have created flyers that we're going to hand out to everybody who comes in and put them in their packets when they're mailed out to their homes before they come up. And I gave Councilmember Kukavas the flyers, so she can pass them around to you later to take a look at. And we are also flyers, the AOT. We've talked about the AOT. We're looking into that. We have submitted payment for it, and we're waiting to hear back from them to find out the requirements, because there are some requirements for AOT. So we kind of, as a board, want to take a look at that and see if we can meet those requirements. I don't think so. I'm just excited to see where this is going, and what we can provide for our information center. I was talking to Courtney, who is our front office gal, and she said she just got a letter from, and she showed it to me. It was really cute. It was from a little boy from Georgia that sent a letter that said, "My family is coming to visit Cholo next month, and you send us some stuff to tell us about your area." And it was really cute. And so she had a packet already, you know, made up form and stuff. And so, you know, and that's what it's all about. And it's really neat to see that kind of interaction with people. So I'm really excited to be a part of this, and I'm so excited for the progress that we're going to make on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. That was brief.
Thank you.
So once again, you can see it's forward motion for the Cholo Chamber of Commerce, and definitely want to continue the symbiotic relationship with the City of Cholo, and offering the Travel and Information Center, but make it more of a joined-together process, not a this and that, but it's actually part of the overall picture, and we focus on the City of Cholo and Cholo as our primary. So obviously, we're here because of funding, and we would appreciate, I think it was asked last time, that we, if we would possibly be able to get the quarter paid, that would benefit us greatly right now, because of COVID and other things. We are in a little bit of a situation where it would be beneficial to us to have cash flow. So if that would be considered, we would all appreciate that. And if anybody has any questions, I can answer.
Any questions of council? Councilmember Leach?
I have a comment. First of all, I'm glad to see you separated everything. I think that, I know I've talked probably each and every one of you, and it's not really my job, but it's his job. But I'm so involved in the TIC part of it, and I'm glad you guys separated and made a little board out of that. I know we've had conversations in the past month about doing that, and I think the direction's awesome, especially when you see people excited about doing it, and you're hitting the businesses. Very important. Not the tourist information side, but for the talent, it's very important. So thank you, guys, all of you. And thanks for being here. Wow, that's never happened. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I'm just going to say thank you, and thank you to the board members as well. Years ago, I sat on that aboard as a representative of the council. But I'm going to say, the challenge is to you as a board is because, as you mentioned, you're going to worry about the outside, the interior. Me, as a Chamber of Commerce, who's over the city, you're an example of how cities should run, how cities should look, and how a business should look from the outside. And so I challenge you to continue to follow through with that, because you are at a very high visibility point in our community, and I'm excited to see what you guys can do to that, because I think it's the character, building, and what Cholo represents, what we can do with things to make it look great. And the tourist information, as you get that information out, we got a lot of people looking at Cholo right now. So it's exciting. Thank you for what you're doing. Rob, thank you for your leadership and things you're doing, too.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. If that's okay.
Sure.
I really appreciate the way that you all buckled down and jumped in running, and you can see the results of it already, and I appreciate it very much. Takes a little effort to get everybody on board. I know, but you're really making a good showing for me and for the city, and so I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Rob, last month, we had a note, a report from Billy Edwards, who was the president at the time, and she indicated that there was a social media consultant, expert, who you guys had hired. I understand that that individual has either left or is no longer with the chamber. What's your guys' plan to kind of continue the momentum on social media with? It seems like there was a, he was doing that in a lot of time, I guess, to do that. You guys were compensating him for that. How are you guys going to plan to move forward?
That's specifically why you show he hasn't been around for the last two weeks, and that's why I showed you the last two weeks of data, to show you that we've literally not skipped a step at all. And the last two weeks of visitors are flowing just as well. So we were expanding that focus outside of just a narrow focus on Facebook to make the impact there had certainly had a definite effect and impact. We maintain part of that, and we would have had to done that anyways, regardless budget-wise, and we're expanding it out to other social media platforms, and the website's a big draw. And then the physical building has to play a part of it, as he was saying. It's a focal visual point, and it's sort of the suit coat, so to speak, that you put on. You put on your Sunday best and look good. That's what we're stepping up. So we've not dropped anything there. The numbers of engagement haven't dropped, and neither have the number of overall impressions. The impressions have dropped a little bit because of where we're sharing, but that's, those weren't, that doesn't affect the impressions. Impressions are the same.
So who's doing that right now?
So that's now, we have a committee. We have a media committee. So Martina Webster is the head of that. Wiley is on that, and Courtney as well. And we'll be adding some other people on the outside, but they're actually working as committee, and we purchase software, which actually makes scheduling a lot more easier, so we can plan it all out, lay it out, and it drops in.
So that's your, kind of your continuity plan, because I'm worried, having been a Cholo Chamber ambassador 10 or 12 years ago, you kind of see that this ebbs and flows, where there's a lot of excitement, and I applaud everybody in their excitement right now, and I just want to make sure that in six months, that that continuity is still there, and that we're not back here talking about a dip in the excitement.
And that's exactly why I wanted to engage more people than a single individuals. So you get two or three people excited, and you get that. You get a big burst, and then it drops down. If you even the load, and everybody has a little part to play, and they're going to all add into it, that allows somebody to drop off a little bit, somebody to step up. And it's about giving them the communication, and then the leeway to be able to do things and make decisions and move forward. And that's why we split it all out into subcommittees to operate things, instead of just having it as a single core point and an individual making decisions. It's spread out, so we have an even load.
Right now, the social media is, a committee is doing that, and it's not a consultant or an individual.
It's all internal. And we've got, I mean, the people that we have, we've all have rather extensive social media experience. So, and nothing previously, it was one thing, nothing previously had been being done. So we started from a zero point, effectively. So to make it jump was actually kind of easy. You just started posting. Because when you went from one post every two weeks to four posts a day, it was definitely, you're going to engage. We are the, we are the Chamber of Commerce. We do have a nice spotlight that shines on us, so it's, and we have a lot of businesses that are engaged. So if they're a member, and they see themselves up there, they're going to share it.
Just one more quick comment to add to that. That's kind of one of the reasons why I wanted them here monthly, until we're all comfortable, if they're going in the right direction. I hate to, not that I hate to see them here every month, but that was one of the reasons, so we could see how excited they are. They show up next month, and they're like, you know, he's not as excited as he was. At least they're in front of us now. That was one of the reasons, because we can see the excitement, you know. And six months from now, if we don't see it, then we might have to go a different direction. So it's just, that's kind of the whole reason why I really like to have their report every month. Thank you.
Have a question for the audience?
Yeah.
You need to, you need to come up, Laura. That's sorry. Thank you.
Laura Singleton from the White Mountain Independent. So this is a question maybe on behalf of the council or for the board. Will you put out a press release or share with us a statement about the departure of Delilah, because that's something that we want to explain to the public? And that's something you can send later, but I think it's the elephant in the room that needs to be addressed, in some sort of.
I would just say, so yeah, give us a little while to whether contemplate, because being a private organization, we don't really want to put it out in public record. Delilah is no longer a part of the board, and this is the entire board sitting here. So that's all I would say at this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't throw it up on us.
Well, I think there's, and we need to explain the division that we do have within the city and the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce runs their board, and they run their elected officers. We partner with them on the side of the Tourist Information Center. And so we don't have, you know, contract with an individual, other than we have contract with the chamber to run our tourist information center. Any other questions, comments? Appreciate it. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Next item we have is a presentation, City of Cholo's American Disabilities Act Committee. You guys shouldn't leave till we decide whether we're going to give you money or not. No, go ahead. You're free.
Lost one vote. Not like any of you are tired or working all day, right?
What am I doing wrong? For heaven's sake. There it is. Sorry. Sorry, sorry. There you go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jay Brimhall. I'm the Community Services Director for the City of Cholo, and I'm also the chairman of the city's ADA Committee. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the ADA Committee that the city has, since this is the first time we've presented to council. I promise, this slide that you see in front of you is the only one you'll have to read a lot of text on. We're going to look at a lot of pictures and talk about some really neat projects that have been done in the city with respect to our ADA community. And so this committee was founded in 2018 to help the city better understand how we're serving ADA populations and how we can better meet that community's need. Now, the committee, the committee is comprised of city staff and members of the public, and then meetings are held quarterly at the, at City Hall to discuss the ongoing efforts made by the City of Cholo. The purpose of this committee, I think it was important to point this out. I can actually read it better up on the board up there, so I'm going to focus my gaze up there. Purpose of this committee is to review city policies, procedures, and recommendations related to the implementing and making improvements to city facilities and programs based on federal ADA regulations. It's important to point out to the public and also to the council that ADA considerations are made. With each submission of plans to our planning and zoning department, they must be ADA compatible and comply with all of the laws that are on the book. And so that's an important distinction. A lot of times, we'll, you know, talk to citizens, and they'll say X, Y, and Z isn't happening at this place. And, you know, we talk to them about what the city's trying to do, and what the city does in order to help our businesses comply with ADA regulation. Next slide. So one of the things that we did a couple years ago, 18 or so months ago, is we put sidewalks down Eighth Street from the deuce back to McNeil. That's what it looked like before, and I think this is a really cool after picture. So what that does is that provides connectivity to one of the area elementary schools from our main thoroughfare in Cholo. That was a big project, and that, it needs to be pointed out, was done with a lot of CDBB funding, Community Development Block grant funding, city research. And that will be kind of a common theme in this short presentation. We do work with a lot of grant funding in order to lead these projects. But that was a great one. And then we are going, I told you, not a lot of text. There's a little bit of text. Hall Street Sidewalk Connectivity. If you go down the street just a little bit over here on Hall Street, they've already started construction. And basically, what that's going to do, that's going to increase connectivity in the downtown region for people in wheelchairs and people with ambulatory issues. And so that also provides great walkways for folks who are wanting to find out what our downtown is about, which is a mission that our Chamber of Commerce has also. So again, providing the infrastructure for folks to get around, and especially folks with ADA concerns, it's a, it's a great thing. And again, that was done with grant funding, and that's pointed out here in parentheses. The next thing that is pretty evident, recently that was completed, was the 16th Street path, and that was done with general fund money. That's been on the CIP for quite a while. And finally, this year, we were able to complete that job. And wow, what a nice, what a nice piece of infrastructure for the city. And again, that complies with all ADA standards, and it's something that we're very proud of, and is a wonderful piece of connective infrastructure for our ADA citizens to get to the park, right? And that's, that's awesome. So that's one we wanted to point out also. And these are all projects, Mayor and Council, that we talk about inside these meetings to point out, okay, do we need to, you know, take certain things into consideration while providing these projects for our citizens, and especially our citizens with ADA concern? Talk about some fun ones now. Meadow Trail. That's one. There are lots of changes happening at the Meadow, and one of those is the fishing piers. And that was, again, done with grant funding and general fund funding. So that place is turning into a gem. People calls all the time about when fish are going to be stocked in Cholo Creek. And now, our ADA community here in Cholo will have access to utilize this wonderful resource, and are one of the most beautiful places I've ever been, frankly.
By the way, the fish truck was pulling out of there about 5:15 tonight.
I didn't know that. Ed, your grandkids. Another one of the highlights of the ADA Committee is our conversations over our transit system. Our transit system is a wonderful resource for folks in Cholo and the region to get around, down to doctor's appointments, to, you know, do their shopping, and to connect to the larger White Mountains area. And we, just very recently, Arizona Department of Transportation did an audit on our system, and that includes a lot of the ADA compliance, and we were 100% good to go on all the ADA compliance. You see that little logo down there in the kind of the middle right-ish that denotes that there's a ramp on that bus, and we've recently got some new buses too, and all of those are outfitted with considerations for folks with ADA needs. Fun ones. The playground that you guys will hear about a little bit later on this evening at Archibec Memorial Park, Fireman's Park, is going to be ADA compliant also, and that's replacement equipment. The equipment that we've had there is about 15 years old, and it needed to be replaced. It had a good life, and this is the, the set of equipment that is going to go in its place. And Public Works and Rick and his staff and Bill have done a great job at picking out colors and a really fun apparatus for the kids to play in, and that's going to really enhance that park. Looking forward to that personally. I know my kids are, too. And then I wanted to give this group an update. We talk every meeting, the ADA meeting that we've had since we announced this project, about the park, the playground down at Frontier Park. It is going to be a 100% inclusive park, or playground, rather. I keep saying park. It's that Frontier Park, but it's a playground. Too piece, too many. So adjacent to this structure will also be a splash pad that will also be ADA compliant, and our citizens will be able to have fun there, no matter what their ability. And we did receive funding in, oh gosh, I think it was April or May, I believe it was April, from the Land and Water Conservation Grant funding through the Arizona State Parks to match the city's contribution to that. So that was basically for half of this project. They have since, with COVID and all the developments around COVID, they've kind of had to reevaluate things, and we got word recently that that funding will more than likely be available in early spring of 2021. So we're still in queue for that funding, and we're looking forward to having this playground complete. And it will be a wonderful, wonderful thing for the downtown region in Cholo on the whole. So I think that's all I've got. I don't know if there are any questions, but I'm here to answer them if there are.
Thank you for that report. Jay, I appreciate it. Any comments, questions, council? Councilwoman Kukavas?
Just a comment. You know, this is a really great report. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I don't think that our citizens always realize that when we talk about construction projects and infrastructure, that that includes this ideation about ADA and including all abilities within all of the projects that we do. And so thank you to the committee and to you for doing this.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? As we look at this ADA, I'm reminded of a, a thing that's in a restaurant that says, you and I take for granted the things that others pray for daily. And a lot of times we forget about those people that can't move quite the same way that we do. And I think we need to be proud as a community that we are all inclusive for all of our citizens. Thank you for what we're doing. Appreciate it. Next item is the consent calendar. Look for any items that need to be discussed individually or removed from the consent. Council member also?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we pull seven C?
Seven C. Okay. Any other items that need to be discussed separately? Okay, this time I'll read, uh, the consent calendar that we have. We have a proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the City of Sholo. Proclamation proclaiming October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Sholo. We have a consideration of the commercial hangar lease and operating agreement with Northern Arizona Healthcare Corporation, Guardian Air Transport. Consideration of Resolution R 2020-26, rescinding Resolution R 2018-11 and adopting the reside Title VI Policy Statement and Information Plan Regarding Non-Discrimination in the City Program and Activities. Consideration of the acceptance of Creekside at Eagle Mountain Estates, Unit 2. And the consideration of the ward of a purchase of a water truck. Uh, consideration of the purchase of a Caterpillar 304 E2 Mini Hydraulic Excavator with the cab. Consideration of a ward of a purchase of a Caterpillar CB 24B Double Drum Asphalt Compactor. And a consideration of the ward of a purchase of installation of playground equipment at Rayland and Archibock Parks. And the consideration of the minutes, the Sholo City Council Study Sessions, September 1st and the regular meetings, September 1st, 2020. Do we have a motion? A motion by Councilmember Leach, second by Councilwoman Kukavas. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Next item, we'll go back to item C of the consent calendar, uh, which is a consideration of the renewal of agreement with the Sholo Chamber of Commerce for the period October 1st, 2020 to December 1st, December 31st, 2020. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, so the mayor, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So the mayor, you guys have the staff summary in your packets, so I'm available for any questions or discussion.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Justin. The only reason I did this is, um, twofold. One is I don't believe that we need to hide this in, in a executive calendar. I, I like to have it just mentioned out that we're going to be doing what we're doing, that we promised it we were going to do. Second thing is, has nothing to do with you, but it does have something to do with the chamber. I want to thank you guys for everything you've done and where, and where you come from. We had a lot of talk with you guys tonight about where it was, what Delila did, where you guys are at now. And we, and we, I, I believe, you know, at least for me, want to see this thing to be a positive growth and never, and not go back again. We know there's going to be bumps and hiccups and everything else, but we just want, for all the stuff that we looked at and went through for months and years, it's finally started doing good. And, and we want to show people that we still stand behind our word, that if you do something right and help, and, and we can see it's definitely improving the city of Sholo, that we will step up and do what we're asking. So that's why I come, I wanted to make the motion private, uh, publicly instead of just hiding it in the consent calendar. So that's, that's the only reason I'm, I'm pulling that out. So I would like to make the motion.
Any other comments or discussions on that? I'm just gonna, Councilmember Clark?
I just, in the memo, there's a clarification. I want to know, um, Councilman-elect or Mayor-elect, uh, John Leach Jr. mentioned that he would like to have them continue to come and give a monthly report. But in the staff memo, it says that the, uh, recommendation would provide monthly reports to staff, uh, will be provided in the man, uh, weekly manager's memo. So I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're motion, motioning here and try to get clarification as to what the expectation is for the chamber, whether we want them to have a representative here once a month, or whether we want them to just provide a monthly, uh, update that Mr. Mooter would provide to us in our weekly memo.
What do you guys feel you want to do?
I, I still want if, I mean, I still want them to be here monthly. I really do.
Next, actually, section 4.8 of the, of the agreement, um, requires that, so.
No, shall require monthly, uh, reports, detain numbers of businesses, numbers and videos. It doesn't say that they need to come to council meeting, but, you know, whether that's changed in the past, uh, these type of people have reported quarterly, but given a monthly report to like the city manager. But you guys are free to change that.
We live here, it's not long.
Like I said, I'd like to see it just because of the things we talked about earlier. So if you need to put that in a motion.
Clarify that in your motion then. I just want to make sure, uh, that, that we have told, uh, past council, uh, past chamber, uh, members, thank you for what they have done. Delila, you know, we deserve a credit for keeping the chamber together, for doing what she did. Uh, the other people have worked hard to, to make the chamber what it is over the years. The chamber has, has seen many, many changes and many diversified people coming through. And I think it's, uh, resilient of our community to support and get behind, uh, good ideas. And hopefully those will continue. So we have a city manager.
One quick question, cause I can see you want a monthly report. Do you want them to do a monthly report the second meeting in October? Or do you want them to come to the retreat is the question? Cause it's going to be a few days after the second meeting.
I think it needs to be.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we just want clarification.
So the, it can be on TV and the public can see in our retreat. That, that doesn't.
We're good with that.
I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, they're welcome to attend.
Yeah, well, they will be, I think.
So we wouldn't want it the first Tuesday of the month or the third Tuesday of the month to have them come?
Either one.
Either one. Okay, I move to renew the agreement between the City of Sholo and the Sholo Chamber of Commerce for a period of October 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2020, and authorize the mayor to sign said agreement.
Clarify the meeting time?
And the meeting time, uh, would be once a month here, uh, that the council members, uh, present their monthly reports.
You have a motion? Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Leach? Any other discussion? Call for the vote, uh, discussion?
I just had a, a point to make. I've been a part of the chamber long enough to understand where they are with regard to the expenses and where they are with regard to the impact of COVID on their dues and such as that. I propose that, uh, we would go ahead and make the payment through the end of the year.
That's part of this motion already. That's part of the contract, yeah.
Okay. Rather than monthly, we would make it out through the end of the year.
Yeah, that's what's, this is on. But thank you. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Want to read these two proclamations. I wasn't going to read them, uh, but I think they're important to our community that I want to read. I want to thank, uh, Circle K. I don't know if you've had a chance of driving out 60 and 260, but if you haven't, please do, to see the support, the tribute of 9/11, of what happened 19 years ago. 19 years ago, we came together as a community and we fought for somebody who was attacking us from an outside. 19 years later, we're fighting from the inside, attacking each other. And hopefully we can recognize why we are the United States of America and why we are one nation under God. This proclamation says, whereas we, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity. Whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meaning of the constitution so they can support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment. And whereas we must always remember those who risk and sacrifice their lives to protect our freedoms and honor those who stand ready to take action every day to defend our nation, both here and abroad. And whereas the 233rd commemoration of the adoption of the U.S. Constitution on September 17, 1787, provides an historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and reflect upon the rights and privileges of citizenship and its responsibilities. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week to commemorate the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas the people of the City of Sholo, Navajo County, Arizona, do enjoy the blessings of liberty, the guarantees of the Bill of Rights, equal protection of the law under the Constitution, and freedoms derived from it. Now therefore, I Daryl Seymour, Mayor on behalf of the Sholo City Council, do hereby join our states and nation and proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the City of Sholo and invite every citizen and institution to join in the national commemoration dated this 15th day of September, 2020. Thank you. The next proclamation is about domestic violence. And it's one of the things that I hope and pray that we can eliminate in our community. And whereas the Domestic Violence Awards Month Awareness Month reaffirms our dedication to forego a community where no one suffers the hurt and hardship that domestic violence causes, and we recommit to doing everything in our power to uphold the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse. And whereas the, we will honor that campaign, the sixth annual one here in Sholo Downtown Streets will be lit purple throughout the month of October to raise awareness about domestic violence. And so may we do our part, may we be grateful for what we do have. It's my hope and prayer that we'll remember these things. Thank you. Next item we have is item eight, which is consideration of award of a construction contract for Cub Lake Road Waterline Replacement Project, City of Sholo, project number W-1120. Mr. Hemosaw?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this fiscal year 2020 capital improvement, uh, plan budget includes a total of $220,000 for a waterline improvement project labeled South Cub Lake Road Waterline Replacement. Scope of work, uh, for the project consists of replacing approximately 1,800 linear feet of aging, deteriorating six-inch thin wall PVC pipe with new eight-inch C900 water main, installing new water surfaces and fire hydrants in this area. Uh, the, the work shall take place in South Cub Lake Road and in Siesta Lane. Uh, the project was designed by a city engineering staff with a construction estimate of $173,000. Project was bidding, a publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Apache Underground Excavating at $164,640. Rolling Specialty Contracting at $166,525. And Brit Pipeline LLC at $332,236.12. Staff recommends awarding a construction contract for the Cub Lake Road, uh, Waterline Replacement, City of Sholo, project number, uh, W1120 to Apache Underground Excavating for the amount not to exceed that $164,640.0. Uh, the bid tabulation for the work is attached. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? See now, I'll call, uh, for a motion. Vice Mayor?
I move to award the construction contract for the Cub Lake Road Waterline Replacement, City of Sholo, project number W1120 to Apache Underground Excavating in the amount not to exceed $164,640.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Think you can see that that passed seven to zero. Next item is item 8B, which is something. It is a consideration of award of construction contract for West Cooley and Fourth Avenue Roadway. Mr. Hemosaw?
Thank you.
I could call you Mr. Cup tonight and get, get even, so.
Oh, there you go. You told me about that last time. I was on my way out. Uh, the city's fiscal year 2021 capital improvement budget includes, uh, $165,000 for roadway replacement project labeled Cooley Improvement Central to Fourth Ave. And a separate $180,000 for another roadway reconstruction project labeled Fourth Ave, Olden Road to Cooley. These two projects are right next to each other and share a common intersection. Scope of the work includes pulverizing the existing roadway section, create a new base material, uh, for a new three-inch asphalt overlay. This project also includes curb gutter, a four-foot sidewalk, ADA ramps, driveways, and required drainage facilities along North Fourth Ave and West Cooley. Now, the work shall take place on West Cooley from Central Avenue to North Fourth Ave and in North Fourth Ave from West Cooley to Olden Road. Uh, the West Cooley portion, this is the final scheduled improvements for this corridor, uh, following the completion of those sewer and water line improvements completed earlier this year. Projects were designed by city engineering staff and been combined into, the two projects have been combined into one, increase the economy of scale and reduce redundant costs of two projects in separate bids. Uh, the project has a construction estimate of $316,000. Uh, the project was bid, um, publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements following result. McCully Construction Incorporated, $310,825. Sholo Construction Incorporated, $337,695. Sunland Asphalt Construction at $339,399. Coombs Construction at $359,970. And Linden Pierce Construction LLC at $468,388.38. A staff from McCullough recommends awarding the construction contract for the West Cooley and Fourth Ave Roadway Reconstruction Project, City of Sholo, project R0221. McCully Construction Incorporated, the amount not to exceed that $310,800. Now, the bid tab is also attached for this project. I'm available for any question.
Questions, comments? Councilmember Leach?
Just a quick comment, since it's two different contractors, are they going to be able to start them at the same time? Or how's, how's the, how they gonna do that?
The, uh, one contractor is doing both together.
Oh, one contract, McCully doing both?
McCully Construction is doing both, um, both roadways as one project. Uh, you might recall them about a month ago, they were awarded the East Hall Sidewalk Connectivity Project. They're just in town, already in town doing work down there. Um, they're going to pull off in a little bit and go over there and start the concrete work for this one in a few weeks.
Do you think their estimation completion is this year?
It is. It is this year.
So let me rephrase that. So the one we just did was Apache Underground, right?
That's correct.
And then, then we just did McCully on this one?
Yes, sir.
That's the same company?
No. Apache Underground is a separate, um, construction company.
There were two projects. There was down, uh, Fourth and Old Linden or?
Yeah, we can.
Cooley and, and that they combined those two projects into one.
Yeah, sorry. We bid them together as one project, one contractor, one time. So we didn't have two contracts right on top.
Councilwoman Kukavas?
I'm gonna make a motion if there's no other comments.
Question?
I do have one thing. I, I, I want to quote you and so I'm hoping that people on, uh, are listening. The West Cooley portion of, of, West Cooley portion is the final scheduled improvement for this corridor following the completion of the sewer and water line replacement project completed earlier this year. I hope that everybody understands that this is the last one and it's going to be a cleaned up mess and it's going to be where you can drive on it, roller skate on it, skateboard, whatever you want to do, it's not going to be potholes all over the place.
Between Fourth Avenue and Central Avenue, that is correct.
Yeah, on, on, yeah, in front of the, the, uh, what is those apartments there?
Yeah, Cooley, yeah. That road definitely needs some work. Uh, we're done punching holes in it. We're ready to, to repay it.
Thank you very much for finishing that. And I, I believe everybody in that neighborhood is going to be thankful too. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kukavas?
This is an exciting project, so we're glad to see that coming to fruition. I move to award the construction contract for the West Cooley and Fourth Avenue Roadway Reconstruction, City of Sholo, project number R-0221 to McCully Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $310,825.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second by Councilmember. Second by council member Kelly. Any other discussion? Any other call for the vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. After this is completed, you will have to find a new road to test your shot, so. Next item is we have a summary of current events. Uh, look at the council members of current events. Councilwoman Kukavas?
Summit Healthcare has its 50th anniversary celebration coming up. You should be receiving an invitation to that shortly. Um, so come out and celebrate with Summit for 50 years and our community providing healthcare.
That's awesome. Any other current events? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, just want to let everybody know that I attended a meeting at Meals and Wheels and Senior Center and, uh, everything is going good there with this COVID-19. It's been a, a big issue of trying to serve people and have people come walking in, but we're still out there serving meals to the people, uh, driving them out there and, and delivering them to their homes. So, um, if you would like to help, uh, Meals and Wheels, please, uh, go up to Senior Center and, and, uh, they're always looking for drivers and, and people to help them. Also attended a Main Street, uh, meeting and, uh, they're looking for new, new things to do, uh, by the end of this year and next year for the community. And, um, so hopefully before too long, we'll be able to, uh, announce what they're looking at doing, um, with, um, with things for the community within the, the end of this year. So, and I also want to tag on what the mayor said, uh, if you have not seen the Circle K down there on 60 and 260, it, there was more people standing on the sidewalk taking pictures these last two weeks than you've seen in a long time. So it's appreciated that, uh, um, somebody had the nerve and the gumption to go out there and put all that stuff up. And, uh, Steve that works, uh, that manages Circle K, the person came in and said, hey, if you'd like to donate, uh, we, you know, we're looking to get more flags out and more boots and stuff like that. So anybody interested into helping that for the next year, or even Veterans Day or any other thing that's coming down, this can be backyard, please, uh, get in touch with them and, uh, see if you can donate something. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to make people aware of, uh, we have a lot of, uh, things coming up shortly in the election. And so know the issues, cast your votes, get out and vote. And we're kept winding up the census of 2020, so it will end here on September 30th. If you have not filled out the census, please do so. You're only helping our community and yourself by filling it out. You're hurting us if you don't. And so appreciate everybody's participation in that. Uh, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as a reminder, Waste Management will be adjusting some of their pickup schedules effective Monday, October 5th. Um, they are mailing postcards to affected residences and the city also notify by mail or, and or email. They're also going to be, Waste Management will be placing stickers on the cards to let them know their pick, new pickup days. If you, there, we have a map and more information available on our website, sholohaz.gov, or you can call City Hall 532-4000. As the mayor mentioned, the election's coming up and just a reminder, voter registration for the November 3rd election ends Monday, October 5th. So if you're not registered or need to re-register, you can, um, um, do that before October 5th. And the mayor also mentioned the census. If you have any questions on that, you can call Justin Tregaskis, our planning zoning director, at 532-4041. If you haven't had a census worker come to your house or filled out the census online, you can still do that online, 2020census.gov. Um, but if a census worker does come to your house, as the mayor mentioned, please fill it out. It will benefit our community or answer their questions. They'll fill it out. And then finally, in public works projects, just to report, the manhole replacement project is, will be completed this week. Work continues on Hall Street sidewalk and drainage improvements. As was mentioned earlier in the meeting, that's along East Hall from 11th Street to White Mountain Road. The Deuce Club's and White Mountain Road Waterline Crossing improvements will begin after October 1st and will take place in four separate, separate locations on the Deuce Club's and White Mountain Road. That work will be done at night to have the most, um, to take care of the traffic issues and have less traffic for the contractor in that case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, seeing we have scheduled meetings, just remind, uh, the council that we do have a study session on 9/29, uh, Tuesday night at 6:00 PM. And, and we do have a retreat coming up in October, so. So we will have a, a meeting on the 5th Tuesday of this month there at 6:00 PM. Seeing no other business at this time, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.